Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Halifax Board Selectment Meeting on this date, January 14th, all Selectmen present. First thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, if you will please join me.
The Pledge of Allegiance is written in the front line of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I must notify you that Area 51 will be...
It's 58.
58.
Why is it 51?
Maybe it could be 51.
Alien.
Alien.
That'd be more fun.
Area 58.
They have secret towers.
Thinking of your age, month 58, 51. Kissing up or get you nowhere. Thank you for pointing that out.
And it will be shown on local stations at a later date. We'll change this. We have a really full agenda tonight, so we'd like to get pertinent information out and make a decision and let it go.
Well, the first thing I wanted to do was, we had asked the chiefs to come in first thing to recognize everyone who had worked on the airplane crash a few weeks ago. Leave is a list here, and I'll just, if that's okay with you, I'll just read. John Keegan, who's a handsome resident who rescued the pilot with a canoe, the other residents of Lake Street who allowed the public safety departments here and for the other communities to set up a command post on their property and attempted to aid the pilot with canoes, Halifax Fire Department, obviously, and Police Department, Halifax Board of Health with Alan Diaz, the Middleborough Fire Department, they brought in an airboat with three firefighters and the chief, the Duxbury Fire Department delivered and assisted with deploying the spill containment with the chief and the deputy also at the scene, Plymouth Fire Department, which provided ambulance for station coverage to the chief at the scene, the Hanson Fire Department, which provided a fire engine for station coverage, and also the Plymouth County Technical Rescue Team, team leaders from Hanson and Hingham, divers from Duxbury, Hanover, and Appington, Massachusetts State Police Department, also Massachusetts Department of Fire Services and their rehab unit, the Department of Environmental Protection, their spill containment trailer, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division for drone surveillance, Plymouth County Sheriff's Office, which provide the Bureau of Criminal Investigations with photography, the FAA, the Federal Aeronautics Administration for phone consultation, also the National Traffic Safety Board for phone consultation there, and then first, which is Andy's Towing and also C-Tow. When WATD called me this morning about the agenda and asked me about this, I said, what it really says more than anything else is teamwork. It's not just one person, it's not just one department within town. When you have an incident like this, you need assistance from a lot of people from a lot of places. And, you know, obviously, your departments came through, but the work you've done and the relationships and connections of all these other entities also made a difference in being able to respond.
There's no borderline when tragedy occurs, when you're crossing somebody else's territory. That's why mutually is so important between the departments in the area. I'm glad nobody was seriously injured.
Right question, and I just want to, like, once again, recognize the residents from White Street and the gentleman from Hanson, who really, before we even got there, went out in the canoes and was able to get them off the plane before we even got there, so hats off to them.
So, kudos.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That really was it, I just, you know, threw your persons to the rest of the department staff, just a very big thank you for the responding.
Awesome job.
Yes. You can hang around for the rest of the afternoon.
Yeah. We'll only be here till 10:30, 11 o'clock.
Okay, is there any additions to the agenda or deletions?
Not for me.
Okay, then at this time, we'll have...
Do you want me to go through the regular course?
No, I know what he wanted to go. Minutes at this time?
You want me to do it?
Yep.
Okay. I would move the regular session for October 1st, 2019, regular session October 9th, 2019, regular session November 26th, 2019, regular session December 3rd, 2019, regular session December 10th, 2019, and executive session December 10th, 2019.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
And before I forget, Happy New Year to all those I haven't seen yet. Vendor's approval?
Okay, I move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Vendor warrant number 54 for $290,682.66, payroll warrant number 55 for $397,933.91, vendor warrant number 56 for $52,615.51, withholding warrant number 57 for $145,295.21, vendor warrant number 58 for $7,393.79, payroll warrant number 59 for $374,853.31, vendor warrant number 60 for $1,366,119.22, withholding warrant number 61 for 3, oh, sorry, for $137,678.80, school warrant number 62 for $504,484.9, ambulance commitment from December 3rd to December 8th for $40,713.70, ambulance commitment from December 9th to December 15th for $44,525.79, ambulance commitment from December 16th to December 22nd for 600, oh, sorry, $68,921.56, ambulance commitment from December 23rd to December 29th for $25,757.14, and ambulance commitment from December 30th to January 5th for $39,487.85.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the following bill, Michael Gilman Esquire for $1,496, Relx Inc., DBA Lexus Nexus for $140, and Attorney Lawrence Mayo, BC for $837.
Second. All in favor of what I'm saying?
No, you can notice the next one they hold up, stay informed.
Okay, I move to affirm the approval of the following bills, Brooks and Durencis for $2,945.10, KP Law, PC for $3,181.76. Second. All in favor?
Aye. I abstain. I move to approve the following warrant and commitment, vendor warrant number 63 for $70,270.93, and the mobile home park fee number 1 for $5,160.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve payment of the Selectmen bill dated January 14th, $42 for the legal ad revolving expense to the Express Newspapers, $150 to the Plymouth County Cooperative Extension Services, $1,323.99 to Town Hall Electricity, to National Grid, $20.09 from the Selectmen expense account to WB Mason, and $284.82 from the Selectmen expense account to WB Mason.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Charlie, I take a follow-up in your lap right now, we don't have a report many too long.
We've got another five minutes or so, so, ambulance abatements for November 2019, $74,015.97 to the board with approval for the abatment list.
I'll move it. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. And the same for December 2019, in the amount of $86,702.38.
I'll move it. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both the patrol officers and the sergeants have notified the board that they request to start negotiations for the next contract, which would be three years for each of the individual bargaining units from 2021 to 2023. I did tell them the town will be ready to negotiate until after meeting with the police chief, and we've scheduled that for two weeks from now, and I'll work with Troy about setting up dates for the negotiations.
Seems like we just finished doing that.
We did.
Finish the circle.
So, on the town report, we have a quote from Harding, it's slightly more than the previous year, but it's within our budget. I did want to mention that, given the few copies now that we're printing for the town report, that it's costing us approximately $24 per copy. As with any print job of like this, the major initial cost is in sending the plates or the equipment of the plates these days, and the individual copies after that are very little. We may want to think about whether we want to use a different process of simply printing a couple of copies and if necessary, binding them here. We're given the cost, and if people want copies, can certainly print them out. I'm not indicating that we should do that for the year we're going to be doing this for, but we may want to be thinking about that in future years.
Well, I've found that we have more copies down on the post office table now than we did people taking home. I counted 56 copies of the town report on the counter.
So, but if the board would approve the quote from Harding, and...
Second. All in favor?
Aye. We did receive another $26,935 in Chapter 90 money through the final supplemental budget that was approved a few weeks ago by the state legislature. I've notified the highway survey of that amount. We did get a letter from Joe Cole Wallace of 597 Mauponson Street. He had some concerns about the paving project that was done along 58, how a joint event joined his driveway. Steve Hayward had gone out there earlier today to take a look at it. He indicated that his crew needs to go out there to make, there's basically a cliff, and so to speak. It's not a beveled edge between where the edge of the driveway is and also part of the pavement, so he's going to be working on improving that. That's within the town's right of way, and I'll notify Mr. Cole Wallace of that. Also, he was complaining about the no parking sign, and Steve said that that will get replaced certainly by April 20th, once the ground is officially unfrozen, put that back in. The current site is illegible at this point. We had a town bank form from Marlene Amady of 21 Jordan Road. She was interested in serving on Youth and Rec, the ZBA and Plank Board, those departments were notified. I had notified the board about her interest and asked if the board wanted to have her in for an interview along with the other candidates, and didn't receive any positive responses, so I hadn't said anything about her.
I'd much rather them interview with the boards if they're in the first before the interview with us.
Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, Hanson's involved in this, they invited officials in Halifax to attend meetings on January 7th, which I missed, but also on February 7th, to Friday, the meetings, and in the morning, I'll try and attend that. I'm waiting for a proposal from OCPC to provide MPV consulting services for Halifax, and we may interwrite by meantime, but I'll get that set up. We have gotten sporadic complaints about waste management and not picking up trash. It's not any one consistent place, we just get maybe one, at least, the Selectmen's Office gets about one complaint every two weeks. I know that many complaints go straight to waste management or to the recycling sector, but when we do, you know, I do bore the complaints from waste management, the problem's solved, and I don't get a second call from the resident. We have a list of items from the Council on Aging that they would like to be declared surplus, everything from an old sewing machine to a fax machine. I did send a note out to the various departments, there's no interest in any of these items, so I'm asking that the board declare them surplus, and then the Council on Aging can have them disposed of.
Any further discussion?
Do we have a list in the packet?
Yeah.
Oh, that's it, just the... Okay. Sorry. I'd move to declare them surplus.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We did reschedule the zoning bylaw discussion for next Tuesday, on the 21st, at 7th Great Hall. Selectmen's meeting room was being used. I still have a draft for the multifamily tomorrow or on Thursday to send out to the boards, the members of the boards and committees that have been interested.
7:15.
Yeah.
Okay. Then we have Mr. Campbell.
First of all, I'd like you to introduce you to Scott Detko. He's come forward and had an interest in joining the committee to fill the unexpired term of Jerry Elliott. This is Scott, and I would like you guys to bring him to our committee first.
What's your background, Scott?
Little right, looking at it. I've been in building, different aspects of it, for the past 15 years or so. All historical society with John and...
Have you been here at the building committee meetings?
What's that?
Been to the meetings?
Yes, I have.
And you've been to town meetings as well?
The last two committee meetings and town meetings, we've had.
Any further questions over here?
Those were the two questions I was going to ask. You usurped my question.
Chairman's prerogative.
I've been told that.
You'll have your turn. Do you want to motion to appoint Scott?
There's nothing that would impede your performing the duties of being on the committee time-wise or anything else?
Time-wise?
Yeah.
No, sir.
And this is obviously recommended by the committee.
And did you do a background check on Mr. Campbell and the rest of them before you decided to go?
You did go to their meetings and listen, right? Just making sure.
Your second there?
Is that a second for me?
You moved it, right?
All right. I'll move it. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Did that bring you to a full complement, though?
Right. I did. The reason why I came was by chief, and the committee put together a survey and sent it out to all of the department heads to kind of have a feeling of what they thought their buildings were in shape, and this is a quick rundown of what was sent back to us. You guys take another job away from me, I may have to retire.
Never.
Good for another year. And just to run it down, go quick. The library doesn't have a lot, too many problems. She has an acoustic problem over there, very concerned about the bathroom, pickup of the bathroom used since the playground's been put back into use. They used that bathroom in there all day long, so that's something we'll have to deal with. She's always had a problem with parking. The fire department, they have a complete disaster down there. They say their building is nonconforming to everything and would like a new building.
Pay it motion?
Be careful in that chair, chief.
I'll see a new building, too, that'll solve everything.
The building maintenance department would like to see something happen so that they could store all of their equipment in one area, and hopefully, expand the jobs, expand on the year for them. The coletas, oh, small problems, repair on holes in walls and stuff, but yes. Council Aging, we know the problem over there, and in fact, our next meeting, next Monday night, we'll have to get something done there because the front room on the second floor has been closed down with the water coming in.
Water coming in?
We can on the roof.
Didn't we just do a roof?
No. Shingles were blown off again during the last storm.
Yeah, shingles keep blowing off. The island pattern wasn't deterred. There's live exposure now, so some spots we have three, four inch exposure, other places you have seven, eight inches, so the nails come off from below them.
We'll have to do something, we'll have to discuss that next week, I need you. Metzger's agent, the same problem, it's been in there for 10 years, 12 years, the heating and air conditioning.
It's not so much they have to be updated, they have to be installed.
That could be relatively easily fixed, right?
Well, this, yes, that's what it works, is a return in this room.
Yeah.
And turn it into a supply.
Yeah, it's just...
So, I just haven't got there yet.
Okay.
And the historical society, they like an addition to the museum, but I think she's dreaming there. The highway department's needing more space, and this mechanic is a lot, going a lot, need a lot, new tools for new trucks that are coming out to maintain, to keep up the maintenance. And we have one problem here, the police department, his building is too big.
Well, that was too big from minute one, actually.
So, well, the chiefs have been kicking around, the two chiefs have been kicking around, a lot of stuff about we'd like to put an emergency complex together, police fire together. We definitely got to come up with something for Pope's Tavern, so the next, we'd like to put an article in a town meeting so that we could get some extra help. Putting all this project together, how are we going to do it? We don't really know yet, but we know that we're going to need some outside help and some legal affairs and that type of thing, so we'll be getting some prices, and maybe this May town meeting, we can come up with more money to hire somebody to help us out.
We need to take an overall view of the whole thing. I think you're right, yeah, yeah. I'm agreeing with you. Very seldom happens, John, but I'm agreeing with you. We need to look at a global picture here and try to peck away at what we can.
Thank you.
So, other than that, a few million dollars will fix it right up.
Your donation would be greatly appreciated.
You're taking jobs away from it.
So, you say, so you say if we give you the job, you donate?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Thank you, John.
Any questions?
Seems to be pretty cut and dry.
All right, so next week, we're going to sit down, I guess, and do some serious discussion on kind of, kind of which way we should go, like, go from there.
Including that potential of swapping some buildings around, too, and...
Maybe.
I know you need some garage space for your vehicles. I know Highway would like to get the water department vehicles out of there.
I know, Scott, he has the ladders and Pope's Taverns and the trucks.
Yeah.
The water building, he's all over the place, John.
Tools in the basement.
Yeah.
Wherever we can find storage, the biggest department uses it.
There's some relative, well, nothing's inexpensive, but relatively inexpensive options for buildings that we might be able to come up with.
That was a couple of million dollars, might do.
Yeah, so anyways, we'll discuss it, and probably should have a meeting other than a regular meeting.
Yeah.
And let everybody's opinion when we come down to something.
I think that's a good idea.
Charlie, you were about to say something?
Well, just, John, what areas are you thinking of using for all these? I mean, we're talking about a public safety complex, we're talking about whether it's a new council on aging or something like that, we're talking about replacing somehow probably the current water department building office, and some functions move out, but what areas are you thinking about using?
Well, you have to, the areas, we don't know exactly where we're going to be using them, I mean, what town land is available. The public safety buildings have to be within a certain radius of the center of town or of a center of...
Where it makes sense, you have a function of it.
If we go to a council on aging new building, which we probably should do because we've had so many attempts that tried to fix this building, that could go almost anywhere in town. So, I mean, we have a lot of options, it's just a matter of narrowing them down and see if they'll work, you know? There's a lot to be put together, that's all.
Well, I see more than anything else, we need to set a priority, as much as all of them need something, we need to step up.
Right, we have to prioritize which one.
Which one need to be done first? Put them all together and then, like I said, start pecking away and looking at one thing at a time and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, and that's why we kind of need an outsider, too, to help us peck away at that because you get a lot, you get a lot of one-sided views from...
It eliminates the infighting, is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
There's no infighting. Well, everybody's got an agenda.
Gordon, you were about to say something?
On the water issue at Pope's Tavern right now, do you guys have enough money in the budget to fix the roof, or is that something we're going to have to go to?
I believe we have, there's money that the town, that Scott thinks...
We've got a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand dollars. If that's money still available, I don't know.
It is still there.
But we almost have to declare that roof next week, an emergency situation, and either try to patch it and stop the water from coming in the building, and that's going to kill...
Well, yeah, that's not, that's why I'm...
So, we'll have to take a look at it, maybe Scott, did you get a price to fix that?
I've got a couple people's remarking on prices.
Yeah.
So, no consolidator.
C and D.
They will have that by next week.
C and D.
I know that this had, this subject had come up. We have a hundred, just over a hundred thousand dollars, and we had said that we would like to use it to fix the roof, so rather than patching and then, I mean, I think that we should try to get right to it.
So, is that something we could do as an emergency, get three bids?
I'll check to see, basically, when we're dealing with emergencies, you do as much as you can within the time limit, in a sense of, you know, if you have to do something now, because you've got a health and safety issue, you need to do it now, but if you're not, if you're not going to be ready to go for a week, then you spend that week getting the quotes inside. So, I'll check.
It would be springtime.
Do we have an estimate on the cost of our payment?
He's working on it?
No, I've got several people working on prices, I haven't got anything back yet.
Hey, what's going to happen, I think if we were determined that we're going to replace that whole roof over there, I think we're going to run into a lot of...
Structure, repair work, structural...
So, it's what I was saying, you can't bid that, repair the roof underneath...
Until you open it up.
Till you see what it is. So, you can get a repair price on shingle, plus what it would cost to do that, so it's a big decision.
The frame itself is part of the problem, so it's all round logs, it's all large round logs, so in order to fit pieces in, each piece has to be hand carved to fit, so it becomes labor intensive.
Unless you just skin over the whole roof first.
Right, well, but the framing underneath is weak, skinning over the whole thing, I don't know if that's such a good idea, I've got pictures of where the notches are, split.
It's probably easier to reinforce than it is to scribe in pieces and getting them.
When do you think you might have an idea of what's going on over there?
I'll start shaking trees again tomorrow and see where the price is, but...
We have a meeting next Tuesday night.
Okay.
That's it for that.
All right, then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Great Scott. Welcome aboard. And we have a continuation of a revocation hearing?
That's...
I mean, I'm sorry, we got, Mr. Wallace is here, David, military-type person.
Hello there. I have a little paper here. My age, I'm lucky to remember my name, so if you don't mind, I'll just have a couple things here. First of all, it's very nice to see you down again and to see you for some time, Janos, I've been...
Well, Happy New Year.
...seeing you, and same to you, and congratulations on your, I think, to the Selectmen, quite a group, you're honored to be here. I would just like to say that, first of all, thank you so much to the Selectmen for allowing the veterans for the wars to use great polyvoam. We've been using it every Thursday night, every Thursday, every second Thursday of the month for the past year. Struck with Barbara Dean who booked us in, and through your kindness, we've been able to use that. Special shout-out, if I may, to Mr. Seelick and Mrs. Cherry, they really helped us... We've been using it every Thursday night, every Thursday, every second Thursday of the month for the past year, starting with Bobberdine who booked us in, and through your kindness, we've been able to use that. Special shout out, if I may, to Mr. Seelick and Mrs. Cherry. They've really helped us so much, and they've facilitated everything for us up there. Last December was very trying for Halifax, you had Halifax and lights on the fourteenth, and we had a meeting on the twelfth, and we had a large assembly there, we had the state commander, we had some of our old R2 vets, they were singing karaoke to us. So that, that being the point, it was a very special ceremony, and I know you're under time limit to get it ready for Saturday. Mr. Seelick very nicely came up and, and I know you folks could have taken it over, but it allowed us to use it all that night, and put you folks in a bind, and we forever will be grateful for that, for the other community that keeps calling us. I wanna change this some more, I wanna mention Memorial Day coming up, and that's part of our calling for being military. A very sacred day to all veterans, I know we have some veterans here, myself, I know Mr. Garrett served our country very admirably, and we thank you for that. And a lot of us, some of us certainly have lost friends in the military, I lost a very dear friend on Chopper, that we had a ceremony for a couple of years ago, we did it in Cherokee out here, because he was Indian from South Carolina. And my point being, it's a very sacred holiday, I don't think any of us have been reminded how important this day is, it's remembrance, it's so different from Veterans Day that we honor all veterans for their service. But, excuse me, but Memorial Day, we remember those special people that are no longer with us, that worked so hard to give us what we have today. And it's so important to future generations to understand this, and I'm really feared that, as Ronald Reagan once said, you know, he says, I think we're the only anthem in, out of all the countries in the world, that the anthem ends in a question, will the flags fly over, will land in a free and home in a parade for how long? And it gets our job to continue this. Since Memorial Day is a very sacred holiday and is military primarily, I think everything should be led by the military. I believe that the military, honor guard, in the color guard, interchangeable quite often, should always lead a procession in a military parade, and essentially, that's what Memorial Day is. So I'm gonna request that, in the past, it's been done a little differently, I would like to see the military leading, honor guard, well, the color guard, leading the parade every Memorial Day first, as the lead. And when we advance up here, after listening to our speech by Steve Littlefield, who's the assistant...
Veterans agent.
Veterans agent. A veterans agent along with Will Curry, a veterans agent. When he gives his very nice speech, and he always does, it's a really nice...
He's very good, very eloquent, very good.
Well, we're very honored, he's part of our unit, and that's always nice to see someone like that performing so adorably, and he does it in uniform, very presentable. After he gives his speech, those that aren't able to, I would like to see them proceed over the hill across. So instead of everyone just standing here, I know some people are challenged as far as mobility goes, and I can understand that, but the ones that are, it would be really nice that they could go over with color guard, because we have chaplains that like to eulogize the folks that these memorials represent. And I want to stand and hear the chaplains give their little speech, because some of these chaplains have spent a lot of time securing this, and he's usually the one there. I would like that also, if that is possible. I'm just gonna throw one other thing out there. We have a lot of members in other towns other than just Halifax, we have to spread it throughout the country as a matter of fact, because some as far as Hawaii, we have them in San Diego, not a whole lot, but most of them do come from the surrounding towns here, being Halifax as our base. Some of these other local towns have these things called Memorial Day committees. I suggest that maybe we could consider doing something like that, maybe, and it could consist of maybe a veterans agent, assistant veterans agent, maybe a representative from the Veterans of Foreign Wars, Mr. Seelick being the chief administrator, certainly would like to have him as part of that, and we could act as like a, almost like a staffing in the military, and we could be presented to the selectmen, because you gentlemen have the power to do the things that are needed. And I'm suggesting like elementary schools around this area could get involved in the youth. I know some of our surrounding towns, as veterans, we go in there regularly and talk to the elementary school, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade usually stop at that point. It's the youth, patriotic awareness of youth is so important, and we've done that several times over the past year, and we've given eight dozen books to one elementary school, they have programs where they get their parents involved, the parents sign up and actually come in and help them with patriotic programs in the school. And they have veterans assemblies, they schedule every three quarters of an hour, and this, these towns, some of these towns have multiple elementary schools, where they invite us all to their assemblies, and these kids get so involved, they give speeches, they have the chorus, they have the band, usually the Gettysburg Address is always there, I don't know why not the particular one is the favorite for everybody, but it is, and these kids do it with zeal, and they really get into it. But some of these kids are amazing, and they, some of these kids give favorite speeches of their grandparents over the Second World War, First World War, and the parents are involved, and of course the vets come. And one particular school a couple of years ago had a big, like, a big gauntlet we had to walk. All the kids come in, they sit in, they sit in the cafeteria, and they all had flags, and it went all the way up through the auditorium, all the way out through the courtyard, out into the school, right by where the high school is across the street in front of, I don't know what town I'm talking about. And they were high-fiving the veterans and tapping them on the shoulders and thanking them. Little things like this are quite nice, and, you know, as far as awareness, I would suggest that maybe we could, we might consider doing something like that, although I don't know how many people would volunteer in this town for if we were to form a committee like that, but we could probably get something going like that, just to enhance our Memorial Day activities, along with inviting local high school bands. I know Sublake has a Kingston, I believe, they probably could feed us something too. That's just one, one thing. Oh, one other little thing that came up to me just the other day, I'm not sure if you were, but I believe there's a scheduled plan for birthday, which is April 22nd this year, over right by the Halifax Elementary School, where one of our local fellows is going to unveil six to eight forty-five by ninety-foot flags. I don't know who I'm talking about, I'm not sure if he's...
Mark, Mark Ellison?
Mark Ellent, yeah. If it's in the planning stage, or if he's asked permission to do that yet, but he asked me if we would like to be part of that, just little things like this, where they can get the entire elementary school out there and get involved with flags. And now there's been a special dispensation, so to speak, for these ninety-foot flags, where they actually allow them to lay them on the ground, the flag etiquette, but of course, out of respect for United States flag, I would think they would put big tacks under there or something, they would just lay them on the ground. That's all, I just, I'm talking, John, we have ten minutes, so I just wanted to talk and turn around. You gentlemen have some really serious business to take your time tonight.
Well, it's a serious...
Well, it really is serious. And the patriotic awareness of the youth is very serious, I mean, that's our future. And these kids need to be aware of just what went on in the past and what it means to the future.
I totally agree with that.
That's what we hope to strive to do. Children are very important lessons to be a father, we work with veterans an awful lot, but the idea of children's hospitals, children in general, is a big thing of what we strive to do and what we really want to do. We love children, and we think that's, that's the way it should be.
It's our future.
So that's absolutely correct, yes. Well, thank you for taking the time and listening, carry me out, and I hope some of these things that you're okay with, if in fact, especially the one leading the parade with the military.
Well, what I would like, have you talked to Will Curry yet, or?
I've talked to him, yes. And Will Curry likes, you know, he's in agreement in everything I've said tonight, everything has been passed by him already. But we just wanna see what your thoughts are on this, if you will be able to lead the parade.
From a personal standpoint, I don't see any problem with it at all.
I think that makes sense, actually.
Because normally what they've been doing is let the fire department go off or...
I know, that's always, it's always been the way here. But we've had so many comments, especially like Second World War veterans, saying, they were saying, well, it's a lack of, a lack of respect for the military, and this is a military day.
It certainly wasn't intentional, but I can see how they would think that.
We just wanna, we just say that, you know, if you folks are okay with us taking that lead in as far as that goes.
Well, actually, Will organizes the parade, right? Is he the...
Yeah, he's thoughtful, or...
Yep.
Grand master, if you will.
And I think he has enough hours per week, I think he has thirteen hours per week, is that right? Something like that, where he can actually, he has enough time to do this.
Well, I think it's Admiral's proposal, and I think it's easily done. I don't see any major issues behind doing something like that.
I think one of the important things here is maybe actually following through all of us on organizing a Memorial Day committee for the town, it could actually get some really nuts and bolts and really get this thing going. And especially getting into the elementary school, and we can take the lead on that. We can build, because we've already done several schools, put them, and we've been involved with a lot of other schools, and some of our veterans have been involved with Wayman's.
So you're not presently going over to the elementary school?
I'm sorry?
Presently, the one from the military is going over to the elementary school?
No, we have not approached Halifax yet, because in the past, there has been, I've got some advances made, and there really wasn't a whole lot of interest at that time. But we figure maybe the time is right now. So we'll go over there, and we will be following it up, and I will personally get involved with that.
Well, if nothing else, you can put it on as a history lesson.
Yeah, well, we have done that, and I've mentioned local schools, we've been involved heavily with several schools, and we had a lot with them, and they have, and they have responded. Kids are tremendous.
I'd like to make one request, is that we taped what you said tonight, would you give us something in writing as to what the points that you'd like to make tonight? And that would be helpful.
And how would I submit it to you, through Mr. Cherry or Mr. Seelick? Mr. Seelick would be the first one.
Either, or, whatever you submit to Pam will get filtered to Charlie.
We share.
We share Charlie.
Thank you, Dan.
I think that was more the point, but then it escapes me, but I would submit it to Charlie.
Well, you get past thirty-six, that happens.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See your support service again. We have revocation hearing?
At seven forty-five, yeah, we have a revocation, continuation of a revocation hearing for Davis Automotive. I know that they've continued making the payments at Collector's Office, they were just there today. So my recommendation to the board would be to continue the hearing to seven forty-five on March tenth.
You want a motion?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Harrison in the junk car?
Have you heard from him?
Well, I'm not, I don't think I've heard from him, I've heard from the court, which has set up a hearing for February thirty-two up in Plymouth. I'm thinking, however, this is not because he was, actually, the court is saying, well, you're fine, so we're gonna have a hearing on this, because I'll get to another one that we issued at the same time, but I notified Attorney Mayo, and I'll get all the information we have, because this went on for a couple of years before, because we were issuing permits every so often for the registered vehicle, and we'll have the complete history for him to be able to follow.
Did we miss something?
Seven fifty?
Seven thirty revocation hearing, fuel storage?
I guess so, yeah, sorry.
Oh, yes.
So the fuel storage permit, that, it was at one twenty-three Palm Mill Road, Kevin Miller had that for a number of years, he moved from town, and even before that, the equipment was moved out, and what he has asked for is that the board revoke the permit for non-use, not, you know, we're not accusing him of the non-use, but he came, he sent a letter to the board selectman asking that the permit be revoked. So I don't know if there's anybody here, Mr. Miller's here, or anybody else who's an interested party on this here on the revocation hearing. For one twenty-three Palm Mill Road? I guess we're with the board vote to revoke it?
So moved, second. President of discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, then we had a revocation hearing at seven fifty, but is it seven fifty?
Not quite.
So we'll wait for that. Dwight Street Parking, back three years ago, residents had complained about cars parking on the street during daylight hours, a note was sent to residents asking them to take into accountability motorists, emergency vehicles, delivery services, et cetera, going down the street when they chose to park their cars on the street, this is one of obviously the narrow roads in town. A resident visited during last month and asked if a similar note could be sent out, so I basically duplicated the note from twenty sixteen and sent it out again. It's not an enforcement issue, as the overnight parking ban is just for the overnight, there's no action needed, but I wanted the board to be aware that we had a complaint about that situation, and that's what I have done with that. Well, I'd sent most of the budgets in that are through the board selectmen's office, I haven't sent in the general insurance budget yet. There are a couple of concerns I have with the insurance rate, one is that the elementary school, especially now with the work that we did on the last three years, is significantly undervalued for insurance purposes. The problem is that it would be a material cost to bring the value on the insurance policy into line with what it would cost to rebuild it, we've lost it completely. Be another twenty thousand dollars or so to bring it up to the forty million dollar valuation, another twenty-nine thousand or so to bring it up to fifty million. I'm planning on bringing that to the board, to the finance committee, I know we're gonna be in a tough situation, but I also want folks to be cognizant that the building is undervalued right now for insurance purposes, and I don't wanna be placed in a situation that if it went down...
Has the insurance company been notified that it's now sprinkled?
Yes, they're aware of it, yes.
Because that makes a difference.
Yeah, that didn't change the rates at all.
Why?
Because they take that into account already.
Well, because it should, it should have been sprinkled.
Well, parts of it were.
It was partly, yeah.
Okay.
The other part of the insurance is also on fire police accident coverage. We had not updated the coverage for a number of years in terms of the weekly benefit, it was probably tied into what wages were fifteen or so years ago, wages have increased during that time, and to bring the, if we have a situation where we have police officers, we have firefighters out on injury leave, they get through this policy, they continue to receive their normal pay, not any overtime, but to bring that up to their normal pay would cost about another nine or ten thousand dollars a year. Again, I'm trying to bring this to the finance committee, as a situation that I think needs to be remedied, again, I understand how things are gonna be tight, but if we had someone out, especially on a one-term injury leave, I don't want, you know, for instance, it might cover a fifty thousand dollar a year salary, but we're paying someone eighty thousand dollars, as an example, and so the town would have to pony up the difference on that. And the policy is meant to cover the full salary. So that's my intention there.
Got another minute.
Okay, let's see, so one more thing I can do. We got Bud's Goods coming in, Aldana Road Parcels, I'm gonna wait, because there's too many things there, just, I'm going to invite Youth and Rec and the Parks Commission to meet with the board on February eleventh to talk about the possibility of the permit system, because we had, if we remember, a couple of months ago, we had a non-resident taxpayer come in to see about the possibility about using Ligon Street Beach. Then also, on one ten Fairway Drive, the building inspector had notified J.P. Morgan Chase about the conditions there, they're the holders of the mortgage, but they haven't actually foreclosed, the process hasn't finished yet, but the bank staff indicated to Rob that there's an interest in beginning cleanup and securing the building, so we'll stay tuned on that. And then for one eleven F status for firefighter Kyle Rogers for a incident on December twenty-first, the fire chief has asked for one eleven F coverage to be covered for medical expenses only for the incident, and the board would need to approve that.
So moved, second.
We got seven fifty at this point.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have...
A revocation hearing for... A revocation hearing for Halifax Country Club?
Right. So the question had come up previously and was brought up again by the Collector's Office and after discussions with Town Council, Town Council had indicated that there's a possibility that the, we have a number of properties owned by various entities that are related to the Peck family. The question came up as to whether there's any intersection among those, the owners of those parcels. And so that's in terms of, some of the entities that own some of the parcels, they're different entities. And whether those entities are in fact owned by the same person. So the board held, decided to hold a revocation hearing on the alcohol license for the country Joseph Peck sent along, I think you all received copies of it, detailing his position on the matter. I think it's actually...
Where is it, Joe? That's the song in the hall right there.
I think it's actually simpler if we would be able to get the ownership information for those entities. Rather, I appreciate the amount of time he put in to his analysis of the situation, but the only thing he mentioned in terms of ownership is that John Peck is the sole owner for the country club business. And there's not a specific, and we have Joseph Peck's letter saying that, but we don't actually have something from Halifax Investments saying the job...
So basically what was being said is that it's not an umbrella company that owns all the properties?
No, they're different, they're different corporations, they're different entities. There's a trust, there's a limited liability corporation, there's a regular corporation under different names. The question is, is who owns those corporations? Is that the same person? And I agree, there's no relationship between those entities. But I would like, you know, and I understand, you know, that Joseph had sent in the letter, but we have actually nothing from those companies indicating...
Have we established that corporations and LLCs, are they exempt?
No.
We have this from council?
Well, they're never exempt in terms of the property.
No, no, I don't mean that. In terms of the ownership.
Well, and council had indicated the last time, I understand, Mr. Peck indicated, well, wait a minute, council said several months ago, it's this way, now he's saying it the other way. And he's not happy about the change of the opinion of Town Council on this. But when, you know, reiterated the matter to council this fall, early this winter, Attorney Mayo indicated, yeah, I think we should be looking at all these entities. If there are, there's an interaction between them, then that's something that should be reviewed by the board as a possibility for revoking the license.
Well, the bottom line is, who owns what and who's responsible for paying the taxes on it?
And that's my question. I mean, the only thing right now we have is Joseph Peck saying that John Peck is the sole owner for Halifax Investments. We don't have anything from Halifax Investments saying that John Peck is sole owner. We have no information about the other two entities as to the ownership or beneficiaries.
Okay, Joseph?
How is he holding one light or another if he doesn't even know who owns them? It's not up to us to prove we don't own something. Halifax Country Club LLC owns the property that has the license. RMJ LLC owns the land that he's talking about on Plymouth Street. The Peck Family Trust owns the land he's talking about on Thompson Street. Those are legal owners. A corporation is viewed the same as a human being under the law. And they're not, now I can see if Halifax Investments was doing business on the land that RMJ LLC owns, but it's not. And I can't provide proof that it's not doing business because Halifax is proof of something that doesn't exist. It's not, you can't give proof of transactions that don't happen. And then the ownership structure is different in all of them. But even if, you know, my father owns 100% of Halifax Investments, my brother and I own 96% of RMJ LLC, but that, it's the corporation that owns the different pieces of land, they're not doing business together. If I got a letter that said, you know, this land goes into tax title on a certain date, this would have been cleared out. The only reason it's not is because, is because this letter was sent. And I don't, you know, things happen. I don't want in the future, be in the middle of July in the season, something happens and RMJ LLC can't pay the taxes. And then Mr. Seale sends a letter threatening to revoke the liquor license and 70 people are on the unemployment line who work for Halifax Investments that has nothing to do with RMJ LLC.
And I'll point out, when I... I said that there was going to be a hearing. I didn't threaten and I wouldn't make that decision. It's the board's decision. The board is holding the hearing. The board is asking for information.
While we're looking for Joseph, Joseph, someone owns the company, someone is gaining profit or nonprofit from it. All we're asking is who those people are so we can make sure we send the proper letter to the proper person.
Well, the liquor license is owned by Halifax Investments.
Yeah.
And that's a legal, it's, that's the way, that's the whole point of a corporation. John Peck, Robert Peck, Joseph Peck, none of them own the liquor license, none of them own the land at 100 Country Club Drive. It's owned by Halifax Investments.
Well, who's responsible for paying the taxes on the property?
On which property?
That's the question.
Well, Halifax Investments owns no property. That's who's responsible for paying it. Not John Peck, Robert Peck or Joseph Peck.
Are you leasing the property to them? Is there some type of agreement that you lease the property to these other entities?
No.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So who currently does the tax collector have listed as the owner of the properties that's not paid the taxes?
So we have RMJ and we have the Peck Family Trust.
Now, RMJ owns what?
The land where Ms. Wells found us.
Okay. And the trust owns?
Their mother's house.
Along with several other properties.
Well, it's all, it's all one piece of land. I don't know how it is split up. It's on Thompson Street. It's all connected.
And the trust?
It's split up as different parcels, but it's one chunk of land.
Who are the trustees of the trust?
There's like 30 of them. It's all there.
Well, actually, John's listed as the trustee.
The trustee, because, well, you said trustees, right?
Well, usually there's more than one.
The trust is owned by the, by the beneficiaries of the trust, which is like 30 people.
Okay.
There's one person that can make the decisions on it, that's John Peck.
Okay. So he's just the trustee and not, not a beneficiary?
Correct.
Okay.
That's good to know. That's exactly the type of information we need.
That's why I'm going there. I'm sorry.
So RMJ is just the parcel on 106?
Correct.
Actually, they own a number of parcels.
Oh, RMJ owns a house and a couple of lives. So it's two people.
And RMJ is yourself and your brother, correct?
Yeah, my father owns 4%, because he figured to give you a side of factor to stop us from fighting. He has another stop us from fighting.
If it's only 4%, you might want to divest yourself because that gives them technical ownership of that.
I know, but it's not, it's, who owns the corporations is irrelevant. The corporation is the one that owns the land.
No, I understand your argument, I'm just...
So, so right now, so RMJ gets the tax bill for that property and that's the property that's...
They have six properties and all six in fact are in arrears, at least last time we got a spreadsheet from the Collector's Office, a various amount, some of them larger than others.
Well, the six properties, five of them is that one piece there. That's just, but five different...
That's how we have it listed on our bills.
Right now.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, just clarifying.
Still haven't got an answer as to who's responsible for paying all the utility bills.
Well, actually, I think Joseph has actually provided the information the board's looking for. For RMJ, you have something only in order of 30 beneficiaries, which is John Peck.
No, that's the Peck Family Trust.
Sorry, Peck Family Trust, you're right. I apologize. For RMJ, the sole owners except for the 4% and the two of you.
Right.
And then John owns Halifax Investments, the business is the actual country club as opposed to the property. So John doesn't have any interaction outside the 4% with those other two entities.
Right.
So who owns the country club, I guess? The land.
The land is owned by Halifax Country Club LLC.
Which is another entity, oh.
Yeah, that, and it's Halifax Country Club, DVA Halifax Investments.
Okay.
But the whole point of these is, it's not just to protect the corporation or protect the shareholders in the end, it's also to protect the employees. If a shareholder gets sick, as if my father is, he's been in bed for the last 10 weeks and he can't pay taxes on his house, it protects the employees from being on the unemployment line. That's the whole point of it.
I still have the same question. Who's responsible for paying the taxes and any other fees of the...
It's a question, who is the legal entity responsible for paying the taxes?
Yes.
The legal entity responsible for paying the taxes on the land at 106 is RMJ LLC.
And who are they?
That's my brother, myself, my father has a small percentage, but according to law, it's not us, RMJ LLC, which have federal ID numbers are the ones who are responsible for paying those taxes. It's not me personally or my brother personally or even my father personally.
You don't have separate accounts to pay, as accountant that separates those?
Yeah, they're completely separate. It's, I mean, is it, I'm, you're talking to account, just the bank account?
No, I'm talking in terms of who's responsible for taking care of all the legal matters on that piece of property. Someone has been, and you say it's 30 people, but who's the head of the board?
The trustee.
The trustee, there's like 30 beneficiaries on the trust. My father's kids and his grandkids, that's, but the part on 106 is RMJ LLC. Who is responsible for paying the taxes? It's not the person that's responsible for paying, it's a corporation that's responsible.
I think probably Troy's, I suspect Troy's asking who signs the check when the check's sent, because it isn't, an entity doesn't sign the check.
It's me or my brother that signs the check. Which I, no one's trying to avoid paying taxes. I'm just trying to avoid something coming up in the future because if something does happen, if bad things happen and RMJ LLC for some reason can't pay the taxes, I don't want to get a letter saying that the country club's legal entity is going to be held responsible because another piece of property, another corporation can't pay the taxes. I mean, that's just, it's not lawful, number one, but number two, like this, it's, they are protecting employees as well. And one has nothing to do with the other. And I think the legal counsel was trying to say is if they're tied together, if RMJ LLC is leasing land from Halifax Investments or Halifax Investments is leasing land or using land that RMJ LLC owns, then the companies are tied together and the taxes...
Actually, it's the opposite. For instance, we've had situations where an entity is renting just another entity and a license holder. The license holder is not responsible for the landlord's taxes.
Property owners.
We've had that situation occurring. We've been very specific in reviewing back taxes and saying, no, we cannot go after the license holder because the landlord isn't paying the taxes. It's not the license holder's responsibility to pay the taxes. It's the property owner.
I agree, it's the same situation, but none of these lands like are tied together. They're not doing business on, RMJ is not doing business on Halifax Investments, Halifax Investments isn't doing business on the...
I think the impasse here is, I know Charlie had indicated, and I think that this is what I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, that some documentation would be helpful in this thing, just showing who the trustees, showing that they are in fact...
Separate.
Separate.
So that one person who owns this isn't the same person who owns that.
But the town has that documentation. They all have their own federal identification number. Those are the entities that own, it's not people that own the land.
I understand you're talking about the ID numbers, but I think, you know, there are, in the case of the trust, there are some trust documents. In the case of the LLC, there are LLC documents that show, of course, not everything gets recorded, but, but it does put down the managers. And typically, they've been in an LLC. The LLC is a singular entity, I agree with that. That's always been, in fact, my interpretation. I don't think the LLC comes into play. I think the trusts maybe. I think the Halifax Investments, is that, is that an LLC? Is that a corporation?
That's, Halifax Investments is a corporation.
Is a corporation.
Not an LLC.
Okay. All right. I think probably, well, I'm not an attorney.
But I mean, he's asking if the businesses are tied together, if they do, if you're asking for paperwork that doesn't exist. I mean, we know who owns the land. And under the law, it's those corporations or the trust that owns the land. It's not a... I mean, if I owned, if I was doing business at 100 Country Club Drive under my name, Joseph Peck, and I owed a water bill and the house on Monconce Street that's in my name...
That's a difference.
That's the same entity, but Halifax Investments is not the same entity as any of the people on that list.
And I understand what you're saying, you still, that's my question. Who do I send the bill to for the taxes?
The bill is made up to RMJ LLC.
And who's responsible for taking care of that business?
I am. I'm the one who writes the checks out of there, but just because I'm, we should be the accountant or the owner, that's, the bill gets sent to RMJ LLC. Does it get sent to John Peck, which Joe Peck will...
The question is John Peck's involvement in RMJ. That's the question, whether he has a substantial interest in that company or not. It appears that the entity that owns the country club, you and your brother aren't on that, you and Roger are not on that. I think that's the case.
Yeah. Very good. Even if that is the case, it doesn't matter if my husband owns all of them.
Wait, but this way, I'm agreeing with you. Not on what you're saying, but I'm agreeing with you that the entities aren't connected. And I'd be happy to recommend to the board that they simply close the hearing and not take any other action.
I would make that motion.
And I'm gonna make a payment plan tomorrow. I just want to be sure that, God forbid, tragedy happens six months down the road and both the season, that we don't face the same thing again.
Well, and speaking for myself, as long as the circumstances don't change. I mean, if the entities change in some fashion, then we'd have to look at it again, but if everything remains the same, I don't think it's a problem. Speaking for myself.
So what properties are behind all the taxes? So we understand which...
So we have several in the Peck Family Trust that are behind taxes. We have several in RMJ LLC that are behind taxes.
But not Halifax Investments.
Correct. Well, Halifax Investments doesn't have property.
No, I understand, I'm just...
Just personal property taxes.
Making that statement.
How much are we, I mean, on taxes? I'm asking how much?
How much?
Outside of...
I'm sorry, and you are?
I'm all in, I mean. I'm a resident, I don't owe taxes.
Okay. I think it's, which one was the?
I believe RMJ, total was 21, and the Peck Family Trust was 22.
Yeah, it was, I believe, throwing out the one that we foreclosed on, which I think was the...
Pine Street.
That was Halifax, Granbury.
Right.
That was something else again.
It was, we ended up with about $80,000, I believe.
Well, that's not a true number because you're counting $40,000 for a piece of land my father gave to the town 20 years ago, but never did the work of going through the, putting in the taxes. And we don't owe that money. We don't owe $80,000.
Okay, well, I have a spreadsheet.
Statement should be corrected.
I have a spreadsheet from the Collector's Office, that's what I have. I'm happy to get an update from the Collector's Office.
And, but you are aware, because you told me yourself, that this $44,000 on there, that's not accurate.
Which is, which is, which is...
Standing in front of a camera.
Which is why I said, why I dropped it from the 130 that was the total, I dropped the 40.
It wouldn't, it's not the list that you gave me.
It's a same list.
Right, and there's a property on there that we don't own.
Right, because we've foreclosed, so I specifically took that number when I was looking at the 130, said, that's not correct, there's a foreclosed property on the list, we'll take that out and that leaves the rest of it.
But regardless of what it is, it will be in tomorrow, as long as I know this goes away to fix all of it.
You've heard my recommendation to the board.
Right, Captain, thank you, but I appreciate that.
Go ahead. But keeping in mind that as far as the land goes, in arrears taxes, the town does have a remedy by taking it for tax title if it ever got to that.
Correct. Of course it does.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just making sure
If I were to give those to the letter I got, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't have argued it at all.
No, no, I, I know where you're coming from.
And several of these properties are in fact in the tax sale process.
Exactly, so.
What's the point of pleasure?
I think I've got a motion on the floor to take Charlie's recommendation and close this. Is that what
I would say, I would close it with no action. I'm gonna accept Mr. Peck's word that the ownership of the three entities are different, that there's not no intersections there, and that's the rule that would be followed. If there was, if there was one person, despite three corporation names, there was one person, I certainly would be saying, I think there's a case to be made that you'd go after, but in this case, where the ownership is not intermingled, then I wouldn't say you close it and take no action. Gordon?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One of us, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess so.
You, you So we have a series of interviews with various candidates for the vacancy on the planning board, I did want to mention that we're just doing interviews tonight, originally, we had hoped to have a joint vote with the board, the planning board. However, the planning board did not have a posting for tonight, and therefore, we can't have a joint meeting with them, we'll have to delay to another
They're not legal?
It wouldn't be legal to have a vote on it, no, what we can do, however, is do the interviews tonight. I think some of these people were interviewed previously by the planning board, I know there were planning board members here, I'm glad to see, in some cases, some of them might not have been there for the first interviews, but we have, I believe, four interviews scheduled, a little bit behind, but we're moving along as well as we can, and I believe the board's going to be interviewing Alan Diaz first.
Call down.
I know you.
Good evening.
Here.
I guess it's my fault. As most of you know, I'm a forty-plus year resident of the town, I've applied for the planning board position. As I've seen in the past, there's been some issues on the planning board. Being a forty-year resident, I'm also a member of Board of Health, I've been an elected official for five years. And I think that some of the experience that I have from being self-employed, from being around the town, involved in the politics, that I can be an asset to the planning board. I think the planning board might need some new direction. It should be focused more on planning and development, and saying, you know, what our town needs, we do need more businesses, and we need more industrial areas developed. And that's my reasoning for applying for that position. I have been involved in the town since early nineteen eighties, the Skating Control Commission, bylaw study committee, cable TV committee for my last forty years, and then the last five years in the Board of Health.
And what about your, your background in terms of construction and, and plan reading?
I'm self-employed, actually been a contractor, I've been self-employed for about thirty-plus years. I know how to read sub-plant, I know how to read drainage plans. I'm not a hundred percent familiar with Halifax's particular bylaws, but I'm familiar with section forty-eight, and I'm familiar with national laws, we got subdivision control. I've represented clients in front of planning boards for the smaller, four main subdivisions. I'm not a developer, I really haven't worked my career as a developer. And that's sort of a different area, but, you know, I'm a little bit familiar with stormwater management, I am very familiar with drainage, road construction, utility construction, and those phases of, of planning and subdivisions.
Do you have the time to devote?
Yes, I do.
The desire to devote?
Yes, I do.
Gordon?
You're aware that you can't represent anybody else in front of any of the boards as an elected official, correct?
I'm aware that I can't represent
Anyone else in front of the board?
Eight wood?
As a member of the Board of Health, I went back and looked at the Conservation Committee minutes, and you represented Brookside Realty before the Conservation Commission, you acted as their agent and as their representative.
That's incorrect.
It's not incorrect, it's in the minutes in two thousand seventeen.
That, that's incorrect, I, I have no affiliation with Brookside Realty.
Well, it's in the minutes that you were the representative for them, representing them, and it's also in the minutes in the planning board meeting in two thousand eighteen that you represented Mr. White before the planning board.
Yes, Brad White is a friend of mine, okay?
But you can't, we can't represent somebody else as an elected official before a board in town?
I'm not aware of that particular statute, you know, I, I'm aware that
It's in the, it's in the conflict of ethics that you have to fill out every year.
You can disclose.
You know, you can't, you can't represent somebody else.
Well, I'm not, I'm not for the exact which statute you're talking about.
You can't represent somebody else in front of a different board either.
I gotta look at that.
Yeah, I, I have to look at that too. As an elected member of the Board of Health, I'm prohibited by statute from installing subterranean systems, which I don't, I don't do any subterranean work in the town, okay? I have been in front of the planning board representing Mr. White, who is a personal friend of mine, on a plan that had been submitted and need to be revised. So I don't, that's not a conflict of interest, I have no financial interest in it.
It doesn't, you don't have to have an interest in it, you just can't represent somebody else as an elected official unless you have a personal interest in that property. Then you can represent yourself in front of a board.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the statute you're talking about.
I, I'll provide a copy for you if you like.
Okay.
Anything further? Other than, I guess, Mr. Diaz should be given an opportunity to know about the anonymous letter we received, so that if he had any comments concerning it.
As far as anonymous letters goes, if someone doesn't have the
Courage to put their name on it.
Put their name on it, I don't give it much credence, because anybody can make any accusation against anybody anonymously, isn't that brave?
I am aware of that, I've watched the planning board meeting, minutes, I've watched the planning board meeting, I did not receive a copy of the letter, so I'm not exactly sure what was in it, it alluded, the same thing that Mr. Andrews said, that I was affiliated with, I think it was Brookside Realty.
No, this was with the
Prime Trust, or something like that, okay?
Okay, anything else you want to add?
No.
Anything else to board, any questions? Thanks, Al.
Thank you very much.
Um, next point was with Timothy Ferbowski, he had contacted the planning board and the selectmen's office, indicating he had a last minute, had an outstate trip, and was going to be able to come in tonight, I told him that if the board wanted to interview him at a later date, the board would tell me if you wanted me to do that or not. So, I don't know if you want to wait officially, officially, we have an eight-twenty interview, Mr. Masio.
We've got a lot on our schedule tonight.
Is he here? David Masio? Want to come on?
How you doing? David Masio, sixteen ten, Deb. I'm trying to get into the planning board to help shake things up in this town and protect our bylaws that we have. I understand that there's some differences we have in this town with, with some things that are going on. I brought my kids here for a reason. So that they could grow up in a farming community, small community, not to watch it get impacted and grow more than it needs to, because there are things that this town will require if we do grow more than we, than we can fit. I understand there's plenty of land, there's, let's leave it that way, that's the way I feel, you know, let's, let's leave the, the, the town the way it is, let's keep it as it looks, a farming town, the right to farm community. I have a background in construction, well over twenty years, heavy equipment, carpentry, electrical plumbing, I know quite a bit about a lot, I'm not, I'm not, you know, perfect at everything, I don't have licenses and everything, but I have an opinion and an experience in quite a bit. Some of the things that, you know, I want to do is keep the character of this town. I, I, I mean nothing disrespectful by it, but I think we need to start moving some of the older politicians that are in this town, maybe it's time for them to step aside, let some younger people that have families that really care about what their families and where their families are going to be brought up in, and start taking over this town and keeping it to what it was, what it's had, what it has been. The bylaws were, were put together to protect this town, to keep it so it stays within the character. Any questions?
No, not from me. Do you have the time to serve on the planning board?
Sure do.
Have you attended any planning board meetings before?
Absolutely have.
Have you, have you, how long have you been in town? I take my statement back, I do have a question.
About, I think totaling about four years now.
Have you served on any committees, have you volunteered for anything?
I, this is it, this is the first one.
First one.
Made up my own copy of the bylaws, been reading those over, and, you know, keeping myself up with that, I tend, I've attended pretty much all the town meetings since I've been in town.
And Mr. Chair, we received similarly another anonymous letter, in this case, from about Mr. Masio, I don't know whether you want me to deal with that either.
It's anonymous?
Yep.
Which was?
Well, the chair's indicating he doesn't want to deal with the letter, so
Okay.
I mean, I'm happy to make your copy of it later on, but
Well, neat.
Anything further?
Excuse me?
Anything further?
No.
Board?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And then we also have an eight-three, we're obviously a little ahead now, with Ashley DeCesa, I think it was.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm Ashley, I've lived in the town a little over five years, I'm currently a director of operations for our home remodeling and construction company, I also have my real estate license. I really enjoy plans and building and things of that nature, I have two children in the town, one that's in first grade, one that will be in kindergarten, she's in pre-K at TLC right now. And my biggest reason for wanting to get involved is because I grew up a town over in Carver, two towns over. Always wanted to come here, be a part of Silver Lake, finally I'm here, have my kids here, plan on being here long-term, and really just want to make sure that we're making good decisions for my children to be able to grow up here, not necessarily my opinion of what needs to go on here, but I feel like I can make good decisions for the whole town as a whole, and not just what I want, or what you want, or just kind of make a good group whole decision on what's good for everybody.
That's a good answer.
It's not always about what I want. Don't tell my husband that, it is but it's not always about what I want.
Or, have you attended town meetings before?
I have. Also, on the list, substitute teacher, my job's gotten a little crazy right now, so that's been a little difficult to do more of that. I volunteer at the school a lot, I go for Joseph art, I'm trying to be active with the children. I will say, I've been to a couple of PTO meetings, not as many as I should, but I really just want to be involved so that I can make sure that my kids have everything I want.
Is this your first foray into town?
I mean, I interviewed with the planning board, yes, this is my first, you know, something that I'm really interested in, don't want to be on the finance committee, I can tell you that.
That's a lot of work.
It's, yeah, it's just, that's a lot, but, um, it's just something I know that I have the background in, and I can have a say and opinion, and not just sit behind a desk and go, oh, that sounds good, I really think I can bring something to the table, knowing plans, working with engineers, understanding permits and bylaws and plans and things of that nature, so.
Should for any reason this not work out, I would very much like to encourage you to find another place to serve as well.
It's my goal, I would like to
Enthusiasm and, uh, it's a wonderful
I would love to get on the school committee, taking a little stuff at a time here, and I think this might be a good place to start if I can make it happen.
Very good.
Do I have an anonymous letter?
Not yet, if you get on, then you'll get some.
I'm sure.
Anything else you'd like to add to it?
No, that's it. Do you have any questions, or anything?
Just why did you step up?
Why? You know, because I'm the biggest advocate that if I don't stand up and speak for my kids, nobody will, and like I said, I plan on being here long-term, and I really think that without getting into the drama, because I don't want to be in the drama of the town, maybe a fresh set of eyes with somebody who hasn't been on the committee and isn't so involved might be a good thing for this town right now.
Might be.
Gordon, Al, any further questions?
No.
Do you plan on pulling papers for the position that you're appointed?
Yeah, so I have to run.
Okay.
I would have no problem with that, and getting signatures and doing what I have to do to get this day on.
That prompted another question, I should have asked this of everybody. If, in fact, you didn't get this particular appointment, would you run anyway?
Yeah.
Good answer.
Yeah, I would. Eyes up for a good challenge.
Good answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So as I mentioned, we can't do the vote tonight, I did send a note to the planning board, to Joanne Snow, the Ms. Assistant for the planning board, I asked that, the question of whether they'll be able to meet with the selectmen on the twenty-eighth, be put on their agenda, so I'll, sure, after Thursday night, you're back, and so what I would recommend is that the board start the meeting on the twenty-eighth early, seven thirty at seven, to leave time for, I don't know, for instance, whether you want to interview Mr. Ferbowski, and then also leave time for discussion, vote on filling the vacancy.
We have room on agenda.
If we start at seven o'clock, would you?
I think it's only fair that he put into it that we at least give him the opportunity to present his qualifications.
So my plan would be to hear back from the planning board after Thursday night's meeting, and then if they're going to be coming on the twenty-eighth, we'll get everything set up, if not, we'll have to work out a different date.
Okay.
So, um, a little, sorry, go ahead.
I said I forgot to ask the last prospective candidate if she too wanted to get rid of the old politician, so I just thought that was an interesting question, I'm sorry.
I don't think they're old.
Also a good answer.
She directed that to Troy.
I don't think they're old. You're like, we would look great up there.
Well, and then Kelly, I would normally say we should, we have another claim at forty-five, and the thing is though, since we put it on the agenda for that time, there may be people coming in specifically for that claim. I still have other matters to bring to the board, if that's okay, I'll continue on that, I'm sorry, I'm not I'm looking all three, you're, you're the only one just looking up at that. Counsel on aging resignations, we received letters from Ellen Murphy and from Richard Wright, both resigning effective on December thirteenth, sorry, December thirty-first of twenty nineteen. I'd like the board to accept the resignations and send thank you letters. I believe that we may have a candidate to fill one of the two vacancies at the selectmen's meeting two weeks from now, but in the meantime, I'll also publicize the vacancies, if that's okay with the board.
So, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stormwater management, we did receive a violation notice from the USPA, we were notified we're in violation of the statutes as we've not completed the work on enacting all the necessary bylaws. We are working with the H B to bring the additional bylaws to the town meeting today, so we should get back into compliance by then.
Charlie, nobody can understand the bylaws.
Who's the V H B?
That's the Ness Haven, I can't remember what the B is, that's the environmental consulting firm that we've been using with Stormwater Management.
Okay.
Um, we did the storm, we did the fuel storage program at Five Short Street. Back, I think it was more than a month ago, the board had received notice that someone was interested in purchasing that property, none of the departments have objected to the sale. However, the building house is abandoned, it will require a change in the town's bylaws to allow for the redevelopment of the building, and we had talked about a proposed bylaw back during the fall to handle situations like this, also, it would handle, and we'll get to Ninety-two Lingan Street a little bit later, but also Zero Spring Street, which are similar properties. Depending what the board wants to do, but my recommendation would be to see if, see if the town would be interested in changing the bylaws to allow a special permit process for properties that we had abandoned buildings or abandoned uses, then to reestablish it on a single family basis by the special permit method. Where we're doing, dealing with substandard lots, that's the problem, it was a forty thousand square foot lot with a hundred fifty, we'd already be fine, but these are substandard lots. That would, if town meeting voted it, then make those properties more valuable, and then therefore, if the town wanted to go ahead through the board selection to sell those properties, I hope as we would, like, get additional compensation beyond what we would be able to sell for them under current circumstances. But it's up to the board if you wanted, you know, if there's no interest in selling the property, that's fine, if there's interest in selling it now, we can start the process, if there's interest in trying to see if the town would vote to change the bylaw on that subject, we could wait until after May.
Where, where is the property, where Short Street?
So Short Street is, if you talk about Lingan Street, so it's on the south side of Lingan Street.
Take a, take a right from Eleventh Avenue.
Yeah.
Okay.
Take a right from Eleventh Avenue.
And it's a little short cut across.
And it's your very first right dirt driveway.
Because it is so short.
And it is so short. There's Hinks' house, and then there's a street, it looks like a driveway, but it's a street.
Okay. Is there a house on that now?
There's a dilapidated structure that's on it, you can't see it through all the
Bad haven.
All the debris, not debris, but vegetation, such as it is vegetation.
So, what's your pleasure, you want to pass over this right now?
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah.
So what will happen is that if the person contacts me, in the meantime, I'll tell them board's taking it under consideration, but not taking any particular them board's taking it under consideration, but not taking any particular action right now. I'll bring this back to the board even in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, and we'll think about, give everybody a chance to think about it.
Let's see. Alleged open meeting law violation on December twentieth. Trup, who's a planning board member, had sent an email to other members of the planning board concerning a number of issues. Then planning board member Gordon R. Andrews then replied to Ms. Trup's email, including also all the members of the planning board as reply. Based on the frequently asked questions section of the attorney general's website concerning the open meeting law, these emails may have been in violation of the open meeting law. Unless the board of selectmen instructs me otherwise, I'll follow procedure for notifications of possible open meeting law violations by notifying the planning board and asking for a reply. And if the reply is not responsive to the issues raised, then I will send the matter to the attorney general's office for determination.
This is the procedure that we follow all of it every case?
Well, it's not followed often because it doesn't come up often. But there's a specific procedure in the open meeting line and the attorney general's procedures set up so that if a person, it doesn't matter who it is, if they feel that a board committee has violated the open meeting law, there's a format and form to send to that board committee, they have to take it under, take it, make a decision, answer that.
Based on the current atmosphere and everything that's going back and forth, and I think.
We have no choice but to go forward.
I, I'm in agreement with that.
Are they, are they going to need counsel to respond to your?
I don't know. It'd be up to them whether if they want to use counsel, I certainly would avail, allow themselves to avail, they can contact Larry.
Need a vote on that?
No, because of what I told you, what I was planning on doing unless you tell me to do it, not do it, I'm just planning on going ahead.
No, I think you should go forward with it.
Let's see, Philson Farms consent agreement. Scott Clausen had notified me that he agreed with the draft. The town council, Larry, may only draw it up, so we have two copies. If you can find them now in all the paperwork here. Yes. Storage. So basically what happened was that Larry had done the draft probably six or eight months ago. And I think somehow it kept bouncing between Mr. Clausen and his counsel and eventually Scott said, look, I'm going to get this done. And came back, it was probably two or three weeks ago, into the office and said, look, I'm ready to do this. What do I need to do? I reviewed everything with Larry, said, yep, this is it.
So you have those for us to sign tonight?
The board will vote to agree and then sign them and then it will be up to Mr. Clausen to go back to court to get the judge to.
Their motion.
Agree to the modifications. I mean, I think you have questions, Gordon.
Sorry, it was just, so the process is that we make the agreement, but he has to bring the agreement to the judge to allow the judge to supplement the agreement?
Or basically this becomes a new consent agreement. Since we had the old one back in the nineties, that the judge, whatever judge was present at that time agreed to. Then we did one two or three years ago at this point and that took about a year to get done. And.
Painful.
But in that case, again, Scott had to go to the judge to get the sign off from the judge saying, okay, you know, if the parties agree to this, that's great.
Well, I'd like the changes that our attorney made and I think it benefits us in the long run, so if you agree.
Larry did a good job too, the whole thing.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Gordon had asked that a letter from Kathleen Clark on the December second be written to record. I don't know what the board wants to do. The board had seen this letter at its previous meeting.
We go to the, at the town meetings and have to take any action on any of it, right? So we're like reopening that hearing again?
It could be seen that way, I don't know.
Yeah, but that's how I see it, reopening. Something that's already been settled, decision's been made on, I see no reason to reopen it. That's just my opinion. I'll go along with that.
Moving to the next one. In the case of Andrews versus Halifax, the court issued a final judgment in favor of Mr. Andrews. The party trust hasn't until March thirteenth, twenty twenty, to obtain all the zoning approvals and related relief. If such permits are not obtained by that date, the ZBA is instructed to revoke the special permits and associated building permits. That would happen in AFO at their April thirteenth meeting. Mr. Andrews has awarded twenty-five dollars in costs from the party trust and three hundred thirteen dollars and twenty-two cents for the town. The town's paid its share on that. Mr. Andrews has appealed the court's decision and requested a new trial or an amendment in the court's judgment. He's asked for the court to issue specific rulings on various zoning issues and that he be allowed to deduce additional evidence that various town officials acted in bad faith in this matter and additional damages should be awarded to him. I know our counsel in this matter is reviewing it and I assume is going to be issuing a reply to the court. That's where that case stands at this point. In terms of the actual party trust and the man's estates and their various permitting, the party trust has received their site plan approval from the planning board based on a new plan on that decision was by the planning board on December second. And the party trust filed a special permit application with the ZBA. Initial hearing was held last night on Monday, January thirteenth. The ZBA voted to continue the hearing and that's going to be on Monday, February tenth and that will have a lay-in of counsel at that meeting. So that's where that stands on that one. On Ninety-two Lincoln Street, the town took this property through foreclosure after house burned down, the taxes needs to be paid. Various parties have decided to store vehicles such as a truck, boat, car and objects and materials on the property. I'm recommending that the board instruct me to notify the abudders of the town's ownership of the property and place notices on said vehicles that aren't about the same given the owners until January twenty-eighth to move all the vehicles, objects and materials from the property else the town take and dispose of them. The board may wish to consider placing a temporary fence around the property or at least no trespassing signs and notify the place of the property the same. May at some point new planning to clean up that lot, but I'd come back to the board's selectmen for an okay to go to the finance committee. I mean, as mentioned above, when we're talking about the Short Street parcel, it would be helpful to have a change in the zoning bylaws so as we would be able to sell this parcel as a developable lot.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Fire department did receive an award of two thousand three hundred ninety dollars and seven cents from the state for hoods and gloves for fire turnout gear program and there is grant paperwork versus grant paperwork. What other kind of paperwork should it be?
Well, I'd like to send a letter to the chief down there. He's, he's done an awesome job as far as finding monies.
In this case, it would only be if the board were authorized, Troy, to sign the necessary paperwork. You're not going to have to sign the other page. Jason basically put his name as the signatory for that and you just need to sign where the yellow arrow is, as long as board gives you permission.
So move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And he's going to flip it over because I had to notify.
Oh, okay.
So he's got to flip it when it's done.
Okay.
Okay, so we got, uh, Andrews and Andrews.
See, we had, just as I mentioned about Mr. Harrison, we also received a notice from court that we will have a hearing on John Peck's fines on earth removal. And the reason I was thinking that the Harrison one wasn't brought by Mr. Harrison was because John never picked up his notice, in the sense that we made, we sent it certified and it came back. So at this point, that's why I'm thinking Mr. Harrison never actually filed an appeal. But again, and the thing is that this is the same, this is the same date and time as the Harrison hearing. I guess the magistrate decide, hey, I'm going to get the same people here.
Get all Halifax at once.
So again, I've notified Larry already and I will present him with our file on that matter too. Let's see, public library, the, let's see. So I'm not quite sure. Okay. So we'll be, so back in twenty seventeen, the board selectmen had approved allowing the library to transfer ownership of withdrawn materials such as books or CDs or DVDs to the Friends of the Homes Public Library so that they could then sell them at the end of going annual book sale. Money then obviously is used by the Friends.
Goes back into the library itself.
To, you know, to help fund library programs and such. The, what Jean Gilant, the library director, is now also asking is very respectfully request in addition to donating the above materials to the Friends of the Library, they also would like to donate, donate materials to the Shelter Dove Inc. in Quincy. I don't have anything from her however about what Dove Inc. is. I mean, if you want, I can, you could, I don't know what you'd like to do. I don't see a particular problem with this. I don't know if this is a human resource agency or something else where Shelter, for instance, or something like that.
Well, I'd like to have a little bit more information on what the organization does before we say, yeah, give it to them, who know what they stand for.
The board, unless the board feels otherwise, I'll just carry this over to the board's meeting on the twenty-eighth and get the information.
Charlie, what was that?
Dove Inc. in Quincy? Like, you know, fly like a dove.
I've never heard of that.
I've never heard of the organization.
I've never heard of Fly Like a Dove either. That's another story.
It's, uh, support domestic violence ended. So Dove is D O and domestic, V and violence and ended. So.
So, yeah, it would be some type of shelter where.
In that case, I'd vote for it.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Gordon. Let's see, where are we? Motorcycle lease, lease of, the continued lease from Harley Davidson for the police department's motorcycle at three hundred twenty-five dollars per month. It's two copies to sign, both by Troy. The board were authorized Troy to sign that. That's for another six months, I believe.
Dan Nelson, so move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The police department did ask if they could have a formal decision from the board's selectmen transferring the old ACO vehicle to the appropriate civilian department, which I believe probably should be the board assessors unless the board's going to take it under its own wing.
Well, I think it was going to be available for.
Right, but somebody's going to need.
Yeah, the assessors. Principal assessor has indicated that they would be fine with taking it, responsibility of it. Do you need that in a vote?
Yes, if you could.
I'll move that.
Just second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kim, we've, I've got another five minutes, but I've run out of mail. I don't know if there's anything from your plate that they needed to do that they didn't sign, they need a for affirmation of votes or anything from the last five weeks.
No, no, I'm just waiting for the, um, the one to find, try and see.
Aldean or parcel?
Oh, yeah. Um, thank you. I think I've flipped over that.
You've also got the home rule petition.
Let me do one thing at a time. No, I appreciate it. So what Tom's mentioning is that he was at a, was Plinth County Board of Assessors?
Yeah. Some county legislative breakfast, the assessor's sponsor.
Sponsor. And he had gone in a copy of a home rule petition from the town.
You don't need to sign it. You don't need to sign it.
No, I mean, it's just Troy.
It's always just Troy.
Don't be too jealous.
No, I'm not jealous at all. I don't want to sign anything.
The idea here is that because of the problems between what the state laws are and on solar farms and what the courts have ruled, that there's just a lot of discontinuities between with the reality on the ground and what's happening and the legislature's failing to act about this and trying to get all the problems solved regarding property taxes. Yes. The idea of the home rule petitions would be, and Tom mentioned this to me, so I'm not speaking for him, but speaking his words. But the idea being that if more communities send in home rule petitions, there'll be greater pressure upon the legislature to actually do something rather than to deal with a tremendous number of home rule petitions. They would rather just one piece of legislation, handle it and get it done.
Just a little background on this. What's going on is there's this thing going on between the Department of Revenue and the appellate tax board. So the appellate tax board is saying that solar developments do not need to pay any tax because of this arcane ruling back in the seventies that you'd have to be of some vintage to appreciate the Don Kent solar provision. And in those days, it really came down to a hot water system with one or two small inefficient solar panels on the roof. So what's happening is as the towns try to tax in any fashion a solar development, the developers are now appealing to the appellate tax board and the appellate tax board is holding that, no, you don't have to pay any tax, which is in conflict with the Department of Revenue that says, yes, you must tax them. So the legislature has just been dragging their feet and trying to get this done. I know, big surprise. So this is an effort to kind of motivate them a little bit. It is on their legislative agenda. It's been on it before and they haven't acted. So the, again, as Charlie indicated, the consensus was that if more towns join into a home rule petition, at some point the legislators are going to feel some pressure to do something.
Are the numbers twenty-five kilowatts AC and one twenty-five, is that the numbers that?
Well, we're going to, we're going to look at this again. This is just the one that Matt Apoicet had submitted and.
I think the idea is not to worry about houses or old buildings.
Right.
So that if you're talking, when we're talking the solar farm, for instance, we're talking usually, let's say megawatt as opposed to twenty-five kilowatts.
Yeah, we're not dealing with individual residential units. It's the fields, the. Yeah, we'd have to tweak it for.
Are you asking us to send similar outlet or?
Yeah, yeah.
So the idea would be we have to still bring it to town meeting, I believe. If the board, you know, take a look at it. If at some point in the next month and a half, the board wants.
We can work on it.
Bring it to town meeting and.
Put together something.
Yeah, I just didn't know if these numbers were the ones that fit us or if that's something that.
Yeah, those are small ones. Matt Apoicet in particular has some really large fields.
Huge.
Yeah, yeah, huge is right. So, so we're going to tweak it.
And you see there's another provision in there. I think it says something on the order of that it has to generate more than one hundred twenty-five percent of electricity that it, the parcel uses. So that, okay, if you've got someone who has a slightly larger one and they're generating a little bit more than they actually use, they're selling it off, again.
It gets complicated because as, whether you tax them as personal property, the whole thing here is to encourage them to do a pilot agreement, payment in lieu of taxes. And in particular, we have a developer right now who has not cared to enter into a pilot agreement and the suspicion is that they're waiting to appeal something so that they don't have to pay any tax.
Right. So that you in fact send a bill to them and they'll say, sorry, we want, you know, we're going to.
We're going to obey it.
TV and.
Yeah, exactly, right. So, and the concept here is that everybody's paying something on taxes. If you own property or you own a business, everybody's.
And you're making money.
And you're making money, and you know, and it's not like the town can't use revenue.
So is the appeals board saying that they don't have to pay any tax on the solar?
Just, potentially just the land.
Oh, so they're not paying?
No.
They don't pay anything.
They don't pay anything.
No.
So the only thing that, so if it's a house lot size, it's only assessed for a hundred and fifty thousand, we'd only be able to assess it a hundred and fifty thousand?
Right, that's how, that's what we now believe is the only avenue we have.
So if you have the River Street property, for instance.
Right, so we talked before there that it was the infrastructure and other things. When the pilot program ends and if they don't re-up, we talked about that it would just be the infrastructure and the panels basically that would be able to tax them on, not.
As personal property.
Yeah, but we wouldn't be able to get a revenue stream off of what they were producing. if that happened.
Correct.
But what you're saying right now is, the appeals board is saying, because of the 1970s.
That arcane law, yep.
That no solar.
Correct, none of the solar equipment.
It's sort of like the blue laws that says if you escort a, a female to church on Sunday, you carry a weapon. That's just how our kids is.
I wanted to ask, so, the pilot program for River Street is still not agreed upon, right?
Correct.
So, maybe how we can handle it even though it wouldn't promote anybody else doing solar until we have, like, if somebody wants to put solar in a field, they cannot start until they sign a pilot program, would that be?
You can't do that. You can't do that. We, we would've done that. Now, the, these people went to the extreme where they paid, you know, typically in a pilot agreement, negotiate most everything, including the building permit fees. These people, our fee schedule is $5 per panel. They paid the $90,000 or $93,000 for the permit fee. And, subject to it being renegotiated when they entered into a pilot agreement. But they're not entering into a pilot agreement, so that $93,000 stands. So, it would stand to reason that they feel they have something to gain here, or they would not procrastinate on putting together a pilot agreement.
Yeah, they would.
Yeah.
So, are we gonna not go for, forward?
No, we're gonna tax them.
But, you know, with any other ones until this is all situated, because that could be a disaster. Do you guys know what happened in Kingston with the wind farm yet?
No.
Nope.
The wind turbines, the company that owned them went out of business and they owe Kingston $600,000. They only have $10,000 from the pilot program and now Kingston's on a hook for decommissioning them, which will be a lot of money, and the electric to, in the meantime. So, it's a disaster, which I fear for the solar in the future, because it's already being rated as a toxic waste.
Thank you.
Well, that's why there's.
We've got an appointment in, in 8:45.
Just have one quick follow-up question. Is the $93,000 more than what you would get?
From the pilot?
From the pilot?
Yes, but that's a one-time deal.
So, they're, they're gambling on the fact that they'll pay the one-time fee and have to pay nothing?
That's my suspicion, 'cause otherwise, they would be anxious to enter into a pilot agreement. 'Cause typically what happens is, most of these companies want a pilot agreement in place because they can't finance this thing afterwards. They need to have established cost. Or, or their, their fin, whoever is that they're looking to finance them wants to know what their fixed costs are gonna be. So, they're, they're gambling here.
Okay.
Okay.
I hate to cut the conversation off, but we have 8:45 and I see, isn't, is Zanowski in the audience?
No.
No.
Just myself. Is that okay?
Yeah, so, so we don't have the Polish contingency here tonight.
I'm sorry?
We don't have the Polish contingency here tonight.
No, no Polish contingencies. Zanowski's just.
So, what pre-till are the discussions in?
Tonight, we are discussing the cultivation facility that proposed.
And the amendments that you're looking to.
Right. So, there are amendments on both sides. So, Bud's Goods has proposed two amendments. One would be to change the maximum size of the building that would be allowed in the host community agreement from 10,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet. Miss, sit, go ahead, sorry.
So, I made the changes very minor on the first page. Everything else that I am not proposing and additional changes.
I think the other thing was the indoor cultivation.
Well, I, it's not that I'm proposing an indoor cultivation, it's that I do wanna figure out the language of adding the word indoor and outdoor cultivation, because we do have to propagate clones before the season indoors technically. So, I just don't want any confusion to think that we wouldn't technically be growing indoors. There will be some growth happening inside to prepare for the outdoor season.
Are there any special conditions or any special procedures, any special equipment?
For?
For the indoor?
No, no, nothing, everything is still perceived the exact way we had presented it, except I do wanna clarify in the language that there would be some vegetation happening indoors to prepare for the large outdoor harvest, so that way, we could pick up a few additional weeks outdoor.
And that's in addition to the storage shed that you want?
No, so what we've, what we've done is we've actually proposed a larger, uh, potential structure onsite, up to 20,000 square feet versus the 10,000 we initially proposed.
Did we discuss last time, um, sprinkling? 'Cause 7, 7, 7,500 square feet of an enclosed building triggers.
Correct.
Fire suppression.
Yes.
And there is no town water there, correct?
No, not down to that.
No, just well.
So, you're talking cisterns or whatever. I, I'm just making sure you've taken that into consideration.
We are looking into all of that right now. We're, we just brought on, uh, civil engineers to look at all the utilities that would be required to bring in power, water, sewer, um, electric.
Definitely no, definitely no sewer.
No, no sewer.
No, no.
There's definitely no sewer, there is a septic, we're just.
Yeah, I know, you perked up on the top.
We were able to perk some of the land, so that's successful.
Right.
Um, in terms of structures, we might, we might actually do multiple smaller structures.
I was gonna say, there are ways.
Yes, with 47 acres, you can get slightly more creative, but majority of the space is for drying the plant at the end of the harvest. Those same drying rooms, we would use as propagation rooms.
In the, in the other season, part of the season.
In the beginning of the season, correct.
So, does your timeline that you presented on when people would be going to the site change at all, if you're gonna start the indoor propagation?
Uh, no, if, if everything goes smoothly, I think we, we start preparing probably in the fall of this year in, in lieu of summer outdoor first harvest in 2021.
So, is your plan still to grow hemp to remove the?
We, we, so, the, the civil engineers are currently in the process. We have scheduled soil testing. So, we first need to determine the quality of the soil before we determine how much, what we have to do to remediate if there are any metals in the soils.
Like artillery shells or anything like that?
Undesignated explosives?
I hope not.
You never know.
I'm not signing up for that. That would be, that would be expensive remediation.
I don't know if I'd do too much plotting or.
Um, but ideally, you know, it's not too bad. And again, we are proposing a much smaller initial phase for the first harvest, and so we would only have to remediate a much smaller footprint.
Except for the fact that you brought up that you can't grow hemp near the marijuana plants.
Well, season one would just be hemp.
Right, but, but if you're looking to propagate out and use a larger area and you're gonna have to decontaminate that area, then you're gonna have to grow hemp on that.
Correct. That is, that is a good point, correct. We would have to figure out how to potentially pick up a mid-harvest in between to get some hemp grown just to remediate some additional land. So, in the summer, if we plant it accordingly and we grow, um, our clones indoors, we could potentially get two harvests in a season instead of one. And so, if we do the two-season flip, then maybe we could remediate soil on one and grow on the other. Depends on how we scale.
Okay, 'cause that was a little different than what was presented that night, that you'd be looking for two harvests on that property. 'Cause the way it was presented, it was, would just be one harvest at the end of the season.
The timeline would still be the same. We're just picking up a shorter and smaller plant, but I'm happy to agree to a one-harvest season if that was.
And I'm just saying it's different.
Yeah, that's how it was presented, yeah.
We're, we're just trying to think through how to maximize what we can get in a season. I think if we can do a little bit more, um, cloning indoors, we could potentially get a larger or smaller, but more harvests.
We, we were originally talking about fumes in that two-week period.
Yes.
Would this create anything? Would you have to ventilate? Was there any fumes?
Which part? The emptying, the cloning?
The cloning, cloning.
No, nothing.
Nothing that's large enough to emit?
No. Our goal is to go from a seed to about a three-inch plant in that time.
A sprout, yes.
A really small baby plant is the best way to put it.
Yeah, but you think that would be hardy enough to put outside in early spring?
By May, if we could put it, you know, if, you know, a New England summer starts at different points every year.
But, but, you never know when it's gonna start.
Exactly.
Or end.
But, but the, the nice thing is if we can, um, grow our seedlings, um, early on, we can continue to kinda play it out an extra week or two weeks if we need it.
So, they get a little bit, not much.
But no odor, no odors happen.
I'm only bringing it up 'cause that was one of the major concerns. If not the major concern.
Are you looking for a decision tonight on this?
Yes.
Well, there are.
But with conditions and contingencies, I'm sure.
So, there were four places that, um, in reviewing other agreements with outdoor facilities that I took a look at, um, particularly in Truro, um, they had, they ended up with an extensive process for dealing with nuisances. And what I wanted to do in this case was make sure that, since we'd be dealing with an outdoor cultivation facility, that the butters have, I don't wanna say protection, but some ability and a process that if they do run into, uh, problems, that there's a process they can follow so that they aren't left just, you know, waving their hands in the air. Um, so what I did was take what was done in Truro and, um, put that together and, you know, under the town's possible amendments for Bud's Goods. So, that's most of what's here on these pages. The other three amendments were, we've got, not that us, but obviously, there's been continued discussion in general with the host community agreements and what are considered to be the reasonable cost factor in the sense of connected with the idea that, some of the language of the state laws, the state regulations, is that the amount of money the town, um, receives should be reasonably related to the costs of the, what the town incurs because of the facility there. And what this basically says is, whatever we do collect, that's considered to be a reasonable cost. And there's waiving of any discussion of, or any, you know.
Contention, or.
Um, another amendment would be, we need, start the process for renewing the host community agreement, so that six months prior to the conclusion of the five-year term of the host community agreement, we agree to engage in good faith and renegotiators. They, renegotiation of a new community impact fee, so that we're not, you know, we don't drop, you know, jump off the cliff at five years and say, wait a minute, why aren't we continuing this? Well, we start the negotiations.
Right, we're at least putting the language in that we're talking about that.
And, and to that point, um, when we go for renewal for our license at the state level without a new, as of today, the way the regulations are, if we do not have a renewed host community, we cannot renew our annual state license. And so, that, sort of, I'm just saying that.
Right.
Because it's more of an incentive for me to be sure.
It behooves you to get it squared away.
I'll be in front of you six months, two years before.
And then the other was the most, what I call the most favored nation section. The, the original language was more, had been written in a way that favored, not sorry, Bud's Goods, I think was language that we'd looked at previously in other possible host community agreements. But as it said, if there was language that a contractor, that your applicant had with another community was more favorable, we would have to use that language. What we agreed to when we talked, um, last year was, we need to change that back over so that if Bud's signs an agreement with terms that are more favorable to that community than the ones that are in here, that we get to amend that con, our host community agreement that would be equal to what's agreed to in that other community.
Does the board feel about this, 40, 20,000 square feet instead of the 10?
I personally don't think it makes any difference, but, I mean, it's a large parcel, it's 47 acres. Is that right?
That's correct, it's 47 acres.
How much of it is wet?
Uh, if we did a hundred-foot buffer, we have 17 acres of buildable land. So, that's still a significant amount of land.
Go ahead. I guess I just had a question on, so, you sign this agreement in Halifax and you grow the plants here, then you have an agreement with Lakeville where you process the plant?
As of today, yes.
And then you have an agreement where you sell the plant, which is, sell the processed is Worcester.
Uh, well, it will, it will be my own retail stores, but it will also be other retail stores at wholesale sales as well.
So, I guess, my question is, if it's a 3% revenue with the town Halifax?
Yes.
Then it's 3% the revenue in Lakeville, and then 3% in Worcester?
Yes.
So, you're giving up 9% of revenue.
Well, theoretically, yes, but with every entity, it's a different transaction and there are different markups that are taken into account to make sure that that walk. So, it's not 9% from my Halifax revenue. It's three, it kind of, the best way to think about it is probably how you think about the tax code. You don't pay the entire new bracket, you just pay that amount as you enter that bracket. So, it's 3% of retail level, 3% of extract level, and then 3% at wholesale Halifax.
So, it would vary.
It would, each, yes, every 3%.
Each tier would be different.
But.
Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't sure that I read that right, 'cause it looked like it was 3% revenue.
It's, it is. It, I mean, the way, the way this entity would function, it would still be its revenue. We're just selling it to another producer that happens to be us. We're selling wholesale material out of Halifax, that's our product that we're putting out.
So, basically, you're running three separate businesses?
Yes.
One sells to the next.
Correct. I wish I could have one, but the tax codes in the United States don't really make it favorable to do such.
So, you want indoor or outdoor?
Finding your way around.
Predominantly outdoor, as I say. I, I don't have an intention to grow indoor. Um, the, one of the biggest reasons we're doing this is from an environmental standpoint and cost, indoors just so much more expensive. But I, I did wanna clarify in the language that there will be some level of growing indoors. I didn't want.
Well, that isn't really a clarification, that's kind of a new thing, and we never discussed that prior, so.
Well, I, I, look, I'm, I'm happy to take it off the table if it's an issue.
I'm not saying you should, I'm just wanna clarify. I, this is the first.
It's a new issue for us. We haven't even discussed it.
I understand, I, I was prepared that that could arise things, but I wanted to be transparent and say, there will be some growing indoors to prepare for the outdoor growth.
I, I don't think I have a particular problem with it, I just wanted to make the point that this is the first we're hearing.
Is there a, a wording that it can be, um, so that it's not?
It could be indoor growing for propagation purposes, uh, maybe, I'm not specific, you want to get it, but.
Yeah, 'cause you really don't know how long you're gonna have the plants inside, 'cause that varies with the weather and, you're not actually gonna cultivate it inside on the, it's just a prop.
Right.
I think we need to define, maybe put a definition of propagation.
Propagation in there.
Sure. Not an issue.
Develop an indoor propagation.
Starter kit, just starter kit, yeah.
I don't know the best way to phrase it.
Yeah, what we.
Sure, we could figure that part out.
So, he wants to start a maternity ward inside from the front outside later on with the kids holding up the plate.
Something like that.
So, what's your stance, guys? It's a pleasure.
I, I don't see how it impacts a whole lot, if any, but, and I'm not a big fan of marijuana, I wanna make, go and notice the thing, but having said that, I, I don't see how this.
It's higher life.
I haven't got time to get.
That's a good life worth living.
Don't drink, don't smoke, don't, uh, don't do drugs.
There's another part.
Don't eat too much sugar.
Or any.
Come on, it's sweet.
Well, that's why you don't have to have any.
Um, I guess I'd like to see the whole thing before we vote to approve it, but I, I'm fine as long as it's, the indoor propagation is defined, um, 'cause I think we're looking at a different pilot if it's indoor propagation and what the, the building would be like and, you know what I mean? Like to define it. I'm not saying what you presented is different, but as long as we define that you're not setting up an indoor grow and we're.
One, one way could be, you could limit our electrical capacity without powerful lighting.
That would do it.
We would limit, we would be limited to growing flower, um, 'cause you need much higher outputs at.
Yeah.
There are many ways to structure it, I guess, let me, I could work with town council.
Want to put that together, and then we can take a look at it in two weeks? I think that makes the most sense, I don't want to-
Sure.
Okay, so-
And I guess the only other thing, Charlie, would be to see the language of the nuisance and see what the need-
Well, I thought I gave, there should be copies, I believe, in the folder. If not, I'm happy to pass it down to you.
I asked Pam, that's what I-
That's right. I don't know if I did or not, so here's a copy.
Anything further?
Sorry. So the idea would be, if you want to send that along to me, I'll bring this whole thing to town council, you can take a look at the amendments that I put in there in the meantime, also, we'll get council to wind it up and bring it back to the board. Right now, I put in 7:10 for the planning board, whether we do an interview and vote, just set that aside. Why don't we say 7:30?
What's the date?
For the 28th. Yeah, just a little dry in here. It's where I brought two water bottles.
That's right. Two very compact water bottles.
Smallest water bottle.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Safe drive home. Thank you.
Pleasant one.
And I apologize to the department heads, we have one more thing on fisheries and wildlife. We're over here. So Aldana Road parcels, where we're at, I have two notices to read from the executive office of energy and environmental affairs, one on Aldana Road, one for Elm Street, I'll get to that in a minute. There are three copies of the option to buy parcel A. This is the one where the state would be purchasing that parcel from the town. Parcel B will be dealing with at a later date. This is the parcel where we're actually spending money as opposed to trading land.
So they're not ready to trade?
No, because they're, one of the things I mentioned is that DKM's still working on the Article 97 legislation. We just haven't got anything from Joan Pierce yet.
So before we sign that, wasn't that part of the agreement, that they would have that ready before we did this?
I don't know, but I'm happy to tell them we're not going to sign it until we have the DKM language.
To say I have no confidence in the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife would be an understatement.
After what you have said at the previous meetings, I don't want to sign-
Joan, I have all confidence.
Yeah, I understand, but she's not writing the show.
She's not writing the show.
Okay.
So you're voting not to sign these?
Well, we're not voting on anything.
I guess I would just, I'm not comfortable signing an agreement to sell the property without getting the piece that we were supposed to receive back, because we'll have no-
We know we won't get the piece for a while, if we at least get the DKM legislation-
Right.
-filed with the state legislature, or at least, it's something you folks can see rather than just the promise. I think it's what Thomas may be saying.
Yo, I just don't want to be sitting in the same position that you were talking about previously for the last 20 years, that we sell the property and then they go, oh, we didn't follow through with it, sorry.
Now, see, that's a case where we waited them out. The old people on the committees actually had institutional memory. Still have to follow through with this thing, so I just want a little kudos for the old people on it.
We weren't great before we started waiting on them.
Okay, so, the two letters I will read anyway. So there are two notices, one for Aldana Road, I'll read that. First is the Elm Street. This is the Katzenberg property, where the state is interested in that. It's not, we're not a party to this, but they, I guess now they have a process where I have to officially notify the state of divorce, like we're meeting. So Massachusetts Department of Fish and Games concerning the purchase of a parcel located in Halifax, letters intended to serve as written notice of the DFG's interest in acquiring this property. Property under construction contains seven acres plus or minus a wildlife habitat. Properties on the east side of Elm Street will enclose, is a locust map, that depicts the property on which DFG is interested. As I mentioned, I think it's 49 Elm Street, if I remember right.
Bogging team?
Are they going to demolish the-
I don't know, I could find out.
Because that would be important.
And the town owns the piece of land that abuts that as conservation land?
Yes.
Yep, a little narrow strip.
That's 14 acres, right?
So would we be able to, if they purchase that, are they going to make a parking lot so people can access?
Well, that's why I think I want to ask Joan about that also.
Okay.
Because that would provide a southern entry, I know we have the Elm Street entry right now, but it would be at the southern tip of the entire Urge Pond complex.
Yeah, which is also near the Snake River. Very close.
If acquired, DFG working through the divisions of fisheries and wildlife, retaining property as open space, protecting and managing wildlife refuge, and provide public access for passive outdoor recreation opportunities include wildlife observation, hunting, fishing, and trapping. Payment of property taxes on DFG interest acquisitions for DFG fee acquisitions completed from January 1st to June 30th. Once acquired, DFG will pay the remaining real estate taxes on the, for that fiscal year, and then the full real estate tax bill on that property for the following fiscal year. For DFG fee acquisitions completed from July 1st to December 30th, once acquired, DFG will pay the remaining real estate taxes on the property for that fiscal year. Done that announcement. And a similar announcement for Aldana Road. Consider everything that I've read already, other than it's 7.67 acres of wildlife habitat. This is on the south side of Aldana Road. Again, the locust map is here, and it's indeed the same wording, aside from the fact it's Aldana. I'm not going to leave it again, but it's here, if somebody wants a copy for some reason. But that's, and that's where we are in that. So is there anything else that I missed, probably, given I think I had six and a half pages of notes before we go into executive session with the department heads to discuss the renegotiations, union negotiations with the mixed bargaining unit, in that holding those discussions in public session would be detrimental to the town's negotiating position. So, but I don't know if you're missing anything else.
Yeah, before you vote, did you, Tom, want to move that way?
Don't do, I don't think we did.
With your home role petition?
I think you wanted to take it under consideration.
Yeah, yeah.
Take a look at the language. As you mentioned, the numbers on there are those ones we want to use.
Okay. Just an note before we- And run it by town council, Gordon.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, and when that be coming back in, I don't know if you moved.
I make Charlie's motion.
No, but you're saying, whatever he said, I'm moving.
I'm moving.
Yes, okay, then Millie is, go to executive session, guys.
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.